Call of order, the November 27th, 2023 meeting.
Pacino?
Here.
Dixon?
Here.
Adamore?
Here.
O'Toole?
Here.
Priscilla?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Moody?
Here.
Okay, all of you are accounted for. Have there any change in the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? All right, agenda approved. I see that there are no minutes to approve. Correct.
Chair, correct. We forgot what the minutes on, so we'll just put two sets at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, are there any citizen comments on non-agenda related topic where no action was taken? Seeing none. So planning commission members and staff reports and comments, Derek? Nobody? Anything you want to say?
Yes, yes. Chair, commission, I have two good answers fairly. So, my intent was to do this at our, one of our last meetings, but the way in which the agenda fell, on which we noted these things, I was not able to do it, but I have two announcements. The first announcement is regarding one of your commissioner, Sharon Chino. Sharon was nominated and received the 2023 Planning Commissioner of the Year Award from Wyoming Planning Association. Now, I'll miss it at the awards ceremony, that's okay. But I wanted to present, I presented this award to Sharon at the city council meeting to try to circumvent its notice in the Wyoming pass newsletter of who was awarded, but so I need that punch, but I didn't want to make this announcement and just make it known to the commission for award and thank her for her service on the commission thus far and I think that for all of us, I think it's important that we try to recognize individuals, all of you even, that serve on this commission, it is very important. Even though maybe you didn't receive the plaque. I do say that that is the case. You can sign behind it as a group, like a that's up to her, it's not that important. Thank you, she was grateful enough to bring it back to you for this presentation, so. No, I just want to, I want to thank Sharon for her service on the commission and Wyoming Pass's recognition of that service and over the years, we've had a few different commissioners receive this award as well, so. Thank you, and commission also, I think that it means something to you all as well, even as body and how it function makes a difference and obviously lifts other commissioners to do a good job. And so with that, I'm going to return this important back to the
Yeah, I do just want to say that I need to feel my, thank you, yes.
Thank you, again, we have a picture about, I just say all thanks.
But I mean, I do feel that, I mean, you all made it such a joy and a pleasure to be in this role and I'm just glad that I've been able in my work for the university to also do some, you know, help out with Wyoming Pass, it's been very fulfilling for me, I'm grateful to have the chance to, but thank you all.
Right, well, thank you, Chair.
Good job. And so remember, next year you could probably take other members of the commission, so it's so.
And people who get the plaque are inevitably will be chair of the commission, that's what I understand. Here, here!
I will not say anything. Um, the second announcement. I guess. The, the second announcement I want to make is just regarding the learning area growth plan. You all had a chance to work on it over the last about year and a half. And through that process, we, with Logan Simpson and the county, proposed this award to the Wyoming Planning Association and that plan won Plan of the Year Award for 2023. I think just similar thing is that, you know, you all have a chance to have multiple meetings, you heard the public comments, you were able to participate process kind of from beginning to end for the most part. With this being a joint plan between the city and the county, I think that that was something that the organization really looked at. But then also too, the organization really looked into speaking, it's the first time a plan like this has been adopted under the new state statutes of the state of Wyoming and so because of that, I think that that was a lot of reason why it was nominated to award the plan. So, you should be proud of that. We presented, just like I said, to city council as well, and the county did the same thing, kind of went through the same but then the commissioners, their planning itself, the commission know, and also Logan Simpson are consultants now, and so thank you to all the work that you did for that as well.
Well, that's, that's great. Can you sort of remind us of where we're we are in the implementation or, you know, is the next step of that, that's my, that particular plan process?
Yeah, this plan process where we're at right now is working on the intergovernmental agreement internally with county staff and then what our hope is is to have the intergovernmental agreement come forward and then right after that will come any proposed regulations that would follow said intergovernmental agreement if the intergovernmental agreement is agreed upon. So. And I think that that's the, where we're at right now, very briefly is we are focused on some key aspects that we think of the plan, that we think that we want to get in the first intergovernmental agreement, I'm going to call it, which allows for us to maybe get something in front of the commission, so planning commission and planning and zoning commission that starts us down that road and kind of starting to implement all the things with the growth plan, but we, it's not going to be all at once, just that's too, too big of a bite to take out and we think that there are some things that we can bring forward sooner than that, that we over easier to put together in terms of regulations and codes and stuff, but and where the county's at too, in terms of where they want to be. And so that's what our hope is, we've got to draft that and form it through an internal staff.
The agreement?
Yeah, yeah. All right, it's all like that. Thank you.
Anything from commissioners in the way of comments? Right, well, seeing none. The next item of business is the invitation to participate in layer meetings from our focus group. Derek, why, if you have something for there?
Chair, commission, so the I've been here is, we provided a letter, this was provided by our public works and engineering staff. Kind of as the letter states, they're forming this focus group that will help provide some advice to the city as they work on stormwater related issues, maybe, you know, regulations and development, some sort of standards for that. What the public works division and engineering division is asking for is one represent, one representative of the planning commission to sit on this group. I think to kind of answer a question that I maybe believe is coming, there will be opportunity for other participation in this, but what the public works division is asking for is this representative from planning commission to provide kind of that perspective of you here developers, you see projects come through, you see stormwater discussed in a more public forum, right, not at a usually high engineering detail level, because it's not like you all deal with, but you see the, you see the impacts of and the discussions that come up and what people perceive as important, what issues you all think are important and they're trying to gain that perspective of you might not be the most technical on the committee, depending upon who's here appointed, but you may, you provide a context that is a little bit different than just the average citizen as a member of a public body such as planning commission. And so I think that that's really what they're trying to, to gain from this group. Like I said, there's going to be other public opportunities to participate if you're really interested in this, there will be documents that will be derived from this, which people can probably probably be able to provide comments on. And so this is just one part of the process where they felt that a planning commissioner will be a good person to have on the committee, so I would say that if anyone is interested, either throw in your name in the ring or nominating as your fellow commissioners to be part of this and then voting on that so that someone is appointed from the commission. So, and then, and then will either that person or we can kind of keep you apprised of the processes in this.
Okay, so, so questions from commissioners or Derek, so I can give the chair, I, two questions, Derek, I'm going to ask the deadline for your rest sleeping. And November 24th?
Yes, so it's, it's okay, they, they are very aware that that's what we're doing tonight. They, they were like, yes, that'll be okay, because they haven't set that, they haven't got those first meetings going, so you'll be able to participate in them.
Second question is, do we monitor a kind of contamination stormwater?
Yes, there is that, but I don't know tons of detail on that, but yeah.
Is the primary purpose of this to define what the method of funding stormwater control is going to be, as far as covering the entire Canada of stormwater?
Um, I think it's broader than just the funding, yeah, but it's where those sidebars are, I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure of. What I do know is that I think that that will be a component, the budget component, but then also I think standards and things like that will be part of that process of discussion for sure.
And as you understand it, all the renters, landowners or property owners will be subject to that charge?
No, I don't, no.
Commissioners' questions for Derek? Dr. Derek, okay. Yeah, Derek, I, that's a great question, additional tool, that the idea of whether the focus is on funding or all of this storm drainage issues, I guess, in the standpoint of us discussing, you know, who, who would be best to represent us if it's somebody that, that really you know, enjoys funding things, whether that would be the best, the best choice or whether it's someone that, that provides input into, into storm drainage issues, concerns, what the problems look like, what you're actually funding priorities are.
For, yeah. If I read it, sure.
Yeah.
My, my opinion on it is, I have no basis to deal with size of pipe well rigs and, you know, percentages of millage and that's not. I would be mostly interested in the funding aspect of it and and the implementation part of it, that's why I would like to be on it. I don't know, it depends on what they want, I don't know, do you have what they're looking for out of this focus group?
I wonder if they're looking for that.
I think they want to have, they want to hear these opinions so that they can start to formulate some of this information, yes, I think that's these discussions, I think, is what's going to happen at this focus.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, I, that's, yeah.
All right, okay, Derek, well, I think we're done with you, you probably get this with, with you, but so i- is there anyone in the public that wants to comment on this? Seeing, seeing none, and I'll bring it back to two amongst us conception of, of how we want to, we want to go through with this. Tom, you, you obviously got an interest?
Yeah, I do, and my concern side is from having done this in my far distant past, it's from the developer's point of view. Right now, we've got with the growth plan and everything else, we've got we're looking at some really expensive development costs before you even turn a spoonful of dirt at these and such, and I'm just wondering the other, the other way I can see funding this is, let's put another line item on the water bill. And with a law order, put it in with the sewer rigs, yeah. And go from there. As far as engineering goes, all I can say is whatever size pipe you think you need, go bigger.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I wouldn't think that that kind of level of detail is what they're, what they're looking for, not just issue and identification.
Yeah, I can say that, I mean, I know that city engineering is working on a technical document for storm drainage like design guidance and stuff like that to address what size pipe, floor rate and all of that. I don't think this is going to give that much of a detailed aspect. From this, from this.
Would it be useful for one of us to contact Eric Jack tomorrow, just by phone, and ask him some questions about what is the intended range of these things, is it mostly focused on justifying the introduction of a charge or stormwater drainage charge to through the region? Is it, is it still open to discussion? And then get back to the rest of the group, including Derek, and say, these are the answers to the question. And now sort of delay it a little bit, but which, going to Derek?
Here's what I'd say is, if you don't feel like you can nominate somebody, then the earliest you could nominate someone would be December 11th and you will miss out on some of the discussion. Well, I, I would say this is, I, I would say that somebody that's interested in this topic of stormwater and potential funding sources is who really should be nominated. I don't, if, I think that some of these answers will come through the process and if you are nominated and feel like that's not really what you signed up for, let me know and we can bring this item back on the floor and then you all can choose to nominate somebody else later down the road if you feel like it's best. I, I, I guess that's, that's the best direction I can give you. I think if you want a voice on that commission, then, or on that focus group, then I would suggest you nominate someone now so that we can get you there and then report back maybe after that first meeting and if you feel like there are others who might best be better suited, I guess you could have that discussion at that point.
Okay, well, I mean, based on what Jake said earlier, I think it makes, makes sense that if we respond to what this letter is saying, which says, you know, funding is something that they're putting out as the primary interest in, you know, that Tom really wants to get into the weeds of, of, of funding and, and that practical aspect that, that, that sort of fulfills what he was provided in this invitation. I mean, I myself, and I'm intensely interested in, in this because I got a laundry list of stormwater related concerns both in water quality and so forth, that, that, you know, I, I want to bring in, into their discussion at that first meeting and so, and so I plan on being at that meeting and, and, and probably am being at all the meetings as a, as a citizen. So, that's just you know, if, if Tom were to be appointed as our representative, that's fine, but I'll, I will be there because I, I I want to talk storm, more of the sort of conceptual aspects of, of stormwater, of situation in town and if anybody else is, is interested, they would do the same. And, and would be free to do so to attend, as any citizen apparent would be able to attend these citizen focus groups. What do you guys think? Is there anybody else that really has, has as strong a desire as Tom to, to be the rep?
No, but I'll nominate Tom for this role.
I'm out, I'm, yeah, let's see. Is that official or unofficial?
It's unofficial and unofficial.
So, all those in favor of Tom Adamore representing the layering planning commission at the layering stormwater focus group? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and then the opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Nay, well, I, I, are you, you're on board, Chris? Or aye or, or nay?
Nay.
Nay.
And I, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't making contact with Sylvie and Chris in, in this process and I apologize.
Do you want to open it up for discussion again? I mean, this is informal.
Yeah, this is informal.
It just took a bow.
I know, we just so, it was, you know, six, six ayes and one, one nay. So I guess nobody passes. Chris, I apologize that we, I missed you.
Well, I'd like to hear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You, you need to turn your, your mic on, there you go.
Yeah. I, I think you, Chris, would be better suited with the questions. But that's just, that's just my viewpoint, that's you seem to have more invested in it and it I, I don't want to say anything that's going to upset Tom or anybody else, it's not personal, it's not anything else, I just think with Chris Moody, with the questions he's got, we'll get more info out of it. But that's just my view and
Well, well, no, Chris, but I, I will be there at those meetings and, and, and sort of concerns that I have are, are going to be I, I, will hopefully be part of the discussion, so I'm, I'm not letting this opportunity slip away because it, it it, it dovetails with the aqua protection plan, some of the detention and retention funds issues, it has to do with you know, flooding, spring free channel, there's a whole, a whole bunch of things that are really important technically on a conceptual level that it should be worked out, I'm sure Jake has similar feelings as well, so, yeah.
Well, my, if the discussion ends up being more technical and out of my yard, I'd be more than happy to come back and ask somebody else to take it over for the planning commission. I, like I said, I'm mostly concerned with funding and practical aspects of this as far as development is concerned.
Yeah, I mean, they gave us precious little sort of guidance as to exactly what, what, what they want, you know, the, the funding methods, but then, you know, they're talking about address both infrastructure needs and waterfalling protection strategies that, and that they want a citizen group that, you know, comes at it from a variety of angles, so they sort of opened it up and then you know, focused on the funding, so we can't, I don't think we can do all of those things with one person. And so I, I, I think, you know, Tom wants to deal with some of the things that I want to deal with, they said, but I think that is, is, is fine, we, we, we won't, we won't miss things that other, I mean, planning commissioners are, are interested in, that we've been talking about for the last year and a half that are stormwater related. Okay, we beat that horse? You're right, not quite.
Not quite, should we have a, connect it to that Tom report back to us, these, these meetings, I think they're just eight, four meetings, but it'd be very useful if Tom could report back to us.
Probably every, I guess, every meeting, but of all meetings, probably after, after.
After, yeah, I mean, it's all, yeah.
Yeah.
I could make the report to review this discussion.
Right, and then, you know, whoever else of us attended, you know, we to chart about.
Overall.
All right. So, moving, moving on. Disclosures, expert communication, potential conflict of interest for the items.
Oh, I had something to mention, not much, but I did speak with the applicant, a couple
Well, maybe.
We, I just
Okay, we can, let me solve the problem. Well, you know, we'll move on to current planning projects, there's no old business, we have some new business. Limerick Platte, CP dash 23, dash 02, Bittersweet Industrial Subdivision of Limerick Platte. Phil, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We're here tonight to discuss the industrial subdivision of Limerick Platte. It's important to note that this site's not been previously platted. The current proposal aims to transform an existing steel-on-steel frame building that's existing there, you've all seen it, it's a pretty nice looking building, into condominium, into a condominium sales structure. So in order for the owner to do that, they need to, they need to plat. It's not platted, he wants to turn it into a condo and sell the storage units, so that's why we're doing this, that's why we're plating. And, and we're in the process now of a preliminary plat, you know, it, you'll see the final plat shortly. So the building is approximately 32,000 square feet in size, it's going to house large open air storage units. Regarding zoning, the problem falls within the C2 general commercial district. The site as mentioned is fully developed, the site plan submitted and approved for renovation in 2019 and then subsequently amended in 2023. The surrounding land uses include suburban commercial areas to the north, south and west and across 15th, you see suburban residential to the east there. The proposal aligns well with the comprehensive plans future land use designation. That land use designation is suburban commercial and under that category the product, well, that, that, it, it fits well under that category. Additionally, it adheres to the major street plan, but 15th Street corridor identified as an existing landmark arterial street and then, you know, build an eye that will eventually also be inclined arterial and more on that later. The preliminary plat does incorporate elements from the parks and bike plan as far as the bike path on 15th Street, which is already existing. In terms of traffic impact, a traffic impact analysis was not being necessary due to minimal increase in traffic expected from the use of storage units. Project complies with standards set out in the fire code. All public improvements will be completed as outlined in the site plan and process, which is currently ongoing. I mean, the site plan has been approved, but all those improvements are still in the process of being Any additional public improvements triggered by the attached MOU that was in your package regarding the build out of Bill Nye is also is covered in that legal agreement that the city's made with Bittersweet Group. In staff's opinion, preliminary class satisfies all required plans for approval. It complies with the zoning district's minimum lot size and dimensions aligns with the design requirements of the municipal code and ensures that future development can be adequately served by public services and infrastructure in that area. As mentioned, the project ensures adequate road systems and public services to accommodate the proposed use. Public comment was part of this project, as it is in every, all of our contracts. Published legal notice in the paper assigned to the law of property and meeting form surrounding property owners through letters. Receiving no inquiries to date about the proposed preliminary plat. The complete preliminary plat adheres to the necessary design and subdivision requirements of layering municipal code. of Larym Municipal Code. Informs to all pertinent city plans. And based on these assessments, our staff recognizes the planning commission recommended approval of the Bittersweet Industrial Subdivision Limerick Platte Council, subject to the conditions outlined. Your staff reports most of the standard conditions that would include any improvements that are done will be done to city standards, and those will be covered in the construction drawings that are always in the final plat stage as well. Mr. Chair, I'd like you to acknowledge that we have Duke Marquis here as well from the Bittersweet Group, if he wishes to share anything, but I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, well, entertaining questions to you before we discuss with the applicant. Commissioners, any questions for Philip?
Mr. Chair, is a traffic light anticipated Bill Nye fifteen or is that a future plan?
At this point, I would need to consult, unless Mr. Taming knows off the top of his head whether in that court Bill Nye study, whether, whether that's.
Yeah, Chair, Commission, no, there's no traffic signal at that intersection planned at the.
All right, thank you.
And the rest.
Yes. And, if you look at a site plan, the site plan document, page five, it looks as though the building, or portion of the building, look clip for future Bill Nye Avenue law on. Am I misreading that? Page five.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just give me one second.
Thank you.
Clean that up.
The junction on that fifty.
That's, that's actually the right place.
But it's, it's not checking where the road is and.
Not sure, question?
The building is.
It is not.
Just the part. What I mean, the same thing.
But it does put their property, it does put their property, right?
And that's what we have on you, Chris. I have a plan.
Right.
Right.
So.
I'm sure, yeah.
Future planning, right?
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't expect that. That's what he's looking back at. I knew. Thanks.
Phil, could you explain what this is? The condominium thing is, it's, it's, it's a great looking structure right now, and, but, yeah, what is, what is this condominium storage? What's the concept and execution?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So when the applicant bought this development proposal to us for the site plan review, it was planned to be owner, it was planned to be packed under ownership by the Bittersweet Group LLC, and that places were going to be, the storage units were going to be leased out. At, at this point, what they're trying to do is condo it. So it's actually, the parcel of land will be owned by the Bittersweet Group, but the actual units will be owned and have ownership by whoever buys them. So they'll, right now, you can't do that because it's all along the Bittersweet. That's how we have a process for condos is where you can sell them off. So ownership changes within, within the site itself.
So, but, but, but owner, it, 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 so it's not storage? I mean, you're first gonna buy one of these, these portions of, of the facility and, and do whatever they want, or, or, or do they have a business, or? It's, it's not strictly storage, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, the, the use is storage. So it's just the condo, it's, it's called a condo process, whether it's residential, commercial. I mean, if it's, if there's split ownership within the parcel itself, then it's considered a condo. So, no, like, people can't, it's not, it's not going to be anything that we know of except storage. That's what the applicant's.
Yeah, maybe that will sort of give us a little more detail.
But that, under, under the site plan, it's been approved. Storage is the only use that's permitted there. So the storage units themselves, yeah, they'll be owned separately, but they will only, you can't live in.
It's okay, you can't, like, you don't have a laboratory or manufacture something.
That's right.
Okay.
Not leaving.
Can you just clarify on, I mean, at the same page, page five, so I'm, I'm not seeing the, see how to proceed where the individual units are. Are they, is that existing building going to be cut up into, do we know how many? Is that, is that the idea that that's what's marked as the existing building, become numerous storage units that are going to individually?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through you. That's right. We have to plat the site first. And then you'll see, or no, the condominium process is an administrative process. So you, that won't come before you, but yes, I believe it's split up into twelve. It's, it's, yeah. It, it's, it's twelve, fifteen, I believe. It's storage units. I mean, so what you'll see, if you ever spend time on our city's GIS website, you'll see how we can look at ownership of parcels. What you'll see here, once it, once it's all said and done, is fifteen or however many storage units. You'll see little boxes within the Bittersweet LLC. And you can see other condominiums around town. That's how it's set. It's, it's the original owner owns the land, and then within there's separate ownership within the structure.
And it's considered one lot, right? As opposed to when it gets carved up into for individual owners of the storage unit, those aren't individual lots later in times.
I mean, they, they can be, yeah, they can be, they can be sold separately, but they, you're just buying the condo. And in the condominium process that goes through the administrative through the planning commission, all that is set up as to what exact, the legal descriptions of those of the, of what you own within the lot is all taken care of.
Okay, I trust, I trust. I don't mean you're going there.
Just one follow-up question. I guess I'm having, the conceptual problem I'm having is that normally when we look at a preliminary plat or a subdivision, it's dividing the land too. And so we see the division on the plat. Now, is this, is this process going through, do you consider this a subdivision? So is it going through that process? And that's why we're, that's why I'm a little bit, I feel uninformed or a little bit apprehensive about acting on it without seeing the division of the unit within the plan that's presented to us.
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you again. This is for one lot. So it's a one lot subdivision, and we don't have a separate process for one or two hundred. It's, it's the same. And this kind of, the, the condominium process is completely different from the subdivision process because of that retained ownership of the lot and just the building itself is being, the ownership's being split up. So.
Jay? Yeah, I've, I've got a question, just, and maybe you've, I think you've already answered my question, but I just, I want to ask it again. In the report that they originally submitted a site plan in two thousand and nineteen, but then in two thousand and twenty-three, they're having to do the subdivision process. Can you explain to me why they didn't have to do this in two thousand and nineteen versus now, why they have to do that in two thousand and twenty-three? And what the difference is between what this currently is? As sort of like being brought into the city or not into the city, as what it currently is versus what the subdivision does, the subdivision process does, bring it in, bring it in.
So, Mr. Chair, through you, I think, first of all, I need to clarify, it's not being brought into the city. It's just unplatted land within the city. And there's unplatted land all over the city, but certain development processes require that a lot be planted. So in, in, in two thousand and nineteen, the applicant brought to us an application for an owner occupied, or, and just an owner retaining storage unit, like a lot of storage units that you see around that are just leased, rented, monthly, yearly, whatever, but ownership is still, you're still paying movement, storage, or whoever. Now, in two thousand and twenty-three, the applicant decided they wanted to explore the option of selling off the storage units. So the only way he could do that was through the condominium process, which triggers the platting of, of the lot. It's one of the development processes ever that have triggered the plating of, of the lot that has happened. So that's why in two thousand and nineteen, it was totally fine. Site plan was required, but plating was not. Kind of think of another example. Right now, we're reviewing another project. Yeah, Mr. Chair. Can you pass a, an example?
An example, Walmart on an unplatted piece of property. He can, he issue, he issue permits to develop land all this time on unplatted property. But as Philip noted, the condominium process, which is land subdivision, requires the last block to be planted first.
So, so maybe my understanding or my definition of a platted lot is different than like what it is in code. I mean, to me, that piece of property, it has it has a defined lot length, distance and bearing where it is, and that is platted from a surveyor's perspective, but that's, it takes more than that in the city to be unplatted. I mean, even though it's, as, I mean, it's been recorded as a plat, and count is different in the, in the definition within city, I guess. And maybe I'm just personally.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, the, the example I was thinking about, the other one in addition to Walmart is Bards. Where we're reviewing the site plan right now, the Bards, multiple buildings, but it's not required to be platted because it's, it's not being condoed out. It's not being split up. Any division of the property would require to be platted. But to your point, to Commissioner Schneider's point, I, I don't, I don't believe that in the county, it's been platted, all lots. They do have legal descriptions. They are, they are considered parcels, but that is a different definition from being plaid.
Okay, okay. Yes.
Got it?
I think so.
Commissioner, who?
So, through the chair, and these are, these, when this is divided up, and I was, I was puzzled by this, and the use of the language condominium, Jake, I have not understood. And if these are just for storage, why will there be seven restaurants? Do you understand that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you, I will defer to the applicant himself to, to describe the, the process of having restrooms in the storage. If I could.
So we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. I, I got a question. So if, if somebody, you don't own the land, but, but they own that storage unit, who's responsible for making sure that all the fifteen or twenty or however many divisions are actually just storing things? I mean, I, I, I get the sense that someone takes ownership of something, they feel, they can do whatever they want with it. And, and granted, they have started it with the idea that I'm going to put a bunch of furniture in there or, or what have you, but then the idea of ownership, admission creep and things, I, I mean, I, I can see that other things will happen in there because of ownership. Who, who, who dogs that? Who, who makes sure that there's not a meth lab there?
If, if, if I'm mistaken, sure, that I think is a question for the applicant because there's any condo I've ever been associated with, there's an agreement you have to sign that limits you as to what you are going to do with that particular condo. So that may be more of a question for the applicant.
In, in, in the commercial sense? I mean, I think residential, okay, you can live there. Yeah, pretty straightforward.
And most condo associations all have legalese in them. They say, who wants to store nuclear weapons? Or, you know, biohazard waste and, and that, that sort of thing. I just sold a condo in Colorado and go through a long list of things that were not allowed to be in there. So I assume that's a question for the applicant.
Right, right. I just, I'm just, anyways, I'm a little dubious. Any, Sylvie or Chris, any, any general question? Okay. No further questions from commissioners, and we'd like to talk to the applicant. I, I don't, I forget what your name is. Duke Stan? What do you do inside that? You want to step up to the mic? Your, 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 your mic isn't.
Is your mic? You're muted.
You're muted. You're on. Oh, is this green, is frozen? Okay. Well. Going once, going twice. Moving on, I guess. But, but I I, I kind of would like to, you know, have, have my question and answer is to making sure that, yeah, Derek.
Chair, Commission, too, I think, just, I would, I would say two things, the, the questions that came up since the applicant can't speak to this. So it's just one. You know, the other, the other level is if things are going on on any property, whether it's someone's house or a show property, industrial property, or anything in the city that doesn't comply with zoning, our office looks at those. We, we get called routinely about people doing things that they're not supposed to be. And we enforce those. That's, I mean, that is another level that will come into play if it's not handled completely at the applicant's level. So.
Okay, so the city is partially embedded in that.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. We do that all the time. So I'll.
Okay, you're back. You're, 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 um, you're, you're muted. You have to open, we, we can't hear you. Can you, can you unmute? We can't, we can't hear you. Well.
Maybe it's.
He's trying to find it. Rhymes or anything you didn't know?
Maybe tell him it's in the lower left-hand corner. It looks like it's frozen. I tried to do the ask mute button, see if someone would pop up for it, but.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's move on. Moving, Derek.
Yeah, just a second thing, just to attempt to answer our other question that we received from the commission, just, the, the units are set up. They're high-end storage units. This is where people park their boats, their RVs, and they've got a wash station. They've got places to hang your life jackets. They've got bathrooms, and they've got all that stuff in there because that's the market that they're tailoring for. These are pretty common across the country. It's a kind of stand, I mean, it's, we, we've seen these things in the industry, is the planning industry, I will say. And this is where you put, you know, lots of things that you own. this is where you put, you know, lots of things that you own into them, and when you're there, you know, putting your new cover on your boat, tube, or whatever it is, you need to go through your restroom, you've got it all right there, you can wash your hands, you can, you know, fill up your gas tank, you can do whatever you're doing in there, but you've got a place to use the restroom, and that's all these units kind of have, is they have these restrooms, they have these, they're pretty nice, they're, they're glorified storage units, they're not storage units so old, I guess, so, just put your stuff in it, slide the door down. So, that's, I mean, that's all I can tell you based upon my experience in the process.
That, that, that's the toolbox franchise, sort of.
Maybe that's what, that's what they're doing, I don't know, that's what they do with every one of them, but that's, but that's what this is.
Commissioner O'Callaghan, do you feel comfortable with your seven, seven bathroom on it? Sort of, yeah, it, it is, is odd, yeah, very lush, sure, but.
Please have to keep back on, sure.
Well, I was, I was, uh, a bit, a bit, ability to take and turn on and off the, uh, microphones a little difficult, but I got it.
Good, good, good job.
I'd be more than happy to answer any of your.
Commissioner O'Callaghan, you wanna ask, ask your question? So, uh, excuse my ignorance, but I was surprised to see there were seven restrooms located down the center of the building, how many storage units are there?
Well, what we're doing here today is just annexing this into the city, uh, not annexing, we're plating it in the city according to the code. Now, the condo, condo association will take care of all of your other questions, I believe, and all we're doing is selling the airspace within that building. So, it will have rules and regulations, and we have, uh, um, covenants and restrictions, and this type of thing that will be approved or disapproved by the administrative process. We have not made the building any bigger or smaller, we have not taken, made the lot any bigger or smaller, all we're asking for is it be platted as a lot, one single lot. The ground, there will be, uh, ground can be under one ownership and the building under a different ownership. But this is a process that we actually, this was our plan when we bought the building, was to do this very same thing. We ran into difficulties because of Bill Nye, which we worked out with the city, uh. And then when we started the, the condominium process, was when I found out that it had to be a platted lot. Never had that situation before, I think it's probably an update that I, it jumped over the top of me. But it's what it is, so we're going through the process to do the, the plating at this point in time, and then we'll come back with the, with the condominium, uh, concept. But it's very, um, condominiums are part of every state in the condominium or, uh, statute, and it's very specific about what we can do and can't do, so the uses may not be all storage, because it, the condominium will, is the one that, that approval process comes separate from this, but it can't violate this, the zoning, and this type of thing. Um, I know at the time we annexed the building in, to the, I remember when we came in with the city and changed the zoning, people were concerned about having a kill plant. That was never our intent. Uh, and from the very first meeting I had with Derek on the site, when we, after we bought the property, I told him we were a condominium project where we would sell off the individual units. I don't know if that clarifies it, but if you have any specific questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I'm still confused, but I'm confused on a higher level. Uh, Doc said this was gonna be used strictly as a storage unit. Are we misunderstanding, though?
They're individual units, but they can be used as long as they don't violate the code or the, the, um, um, the con, I mean, the concepts. The zoning con, zoning regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, if I may, so, the, the site plan that was approved for these storage units, you know, when you approve a site plan, the use is the biggest thing, that, the, the biggest question that we ask first, because based on the use, that's what the applicant's gonna be responsible for as far as parking goes, as far as design standards and other things um, that we review in the site plan process, so the site plan was reviewed under the storage unit principle, pro, being the use. So, um, to the applicant's point, I, I'm not sure, um, I, I wanna make that very clear, that that's what the, that's the use that's been approved. Um, a change in use may trigger a, another site plan process, to make sure that, you know, it, because there are innumerable uses in the C two district, and a, at this point in time, um, if somebody with ownership of a piece of property like this, um, we, we just ran into that in another, um, um, shared space on, on the court, where a unauthorized use, which you all heard, barber shop, um, um, that was, was put in to a similar storage unit, which didn't fit into the zoning district, and we're going through a process of enforcement, so the site plan was approved for storage, if anything else wants to be done, then the applicant would need to come back to the city and um, see whether additional improvements would be required through an additional site plan process based on a change of use.
Oh, 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 okay, so, if, um, the site plan is based on storage, and there's fifteen units that are carved out, and each one has a different type of use that's compliant with the C two zone, so is there a new site plan for, for every proposed use in a, in the unit? Um, that is different than, than, than storage, that, that they have to go through? Which seems rather tedious?
Well, it depends, uh, Mr. Chair, it depends. We do have code for multi-tenant complexes, right, so it's, um, for strip malls, for things like this, where, you know, where a change in, uh, but certain change, certain things are just not gonna be permitted, they, like a restaurant couldn't just be put in.
No, I understand.
Because of the additional parking that were required, signage, and so forth.
So, if, 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 as a, if there's a perceived idea of how much parking would be needed if they were all storage units, versus, you know, four were storage, and two of them are some commercial facility, or, or, it's, 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 it's it's up to them to decide what they're gonna do with their property within the C two, and then so there, there might be more people coming, or parking requirements. And I'm, I'm missing something?
I think to simplify and, and to echo the point that's been made, is that these are storage units as approved by the site plan. They can't be anything else, if they want, if he wa, if the applicant desires for different uses, they'll have to come to us, and we will walk them through the necessary process to make that, but at this point, storage unit and everything that that entails, the city code is the only thing permitted.
Okay, as long, as long the applicant understands, understands that loud and clear. Can you imagine, yeah, that's not true. So, yeah, uh, 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 Mr., Mr. Duke, uh, do you understand what, what, what Philip is saying? With respect to the site plan, what we're approving is, is based on storage, uh, anything else in, in?
Almost. He's saying, our, our purpose here tonight is to do nothing more than subdividing that parcel into a platted property. The others I do understand, but even Amazon started off in a garage, which was the storage unit, uh, Google, um, Microsoft, all of these, there could be an, any number of people in Wyoming, that are starting, they have an idea, uh, and they will start in a place like this. So, but that's separate from what we're doing tonight, all we're doing is asking that it be platted, and if you wanna plaid it that way with those conditions, then that's up to you, but all we're doing here is getting a platted, so.
Chair? Yes, so that helps, I mean, that clarifies what we're doing, I think, and I did Google to see, it does seem like the stored condos are relatively common, I think what's a challenge for us is that we haven't experienced it here, so we're having a little trouble getting our heads wrapped around the concept. Um, but I, but I hear what you're saying, that this action is, is limited to what's been put in front of us. Uh, but I think what we're, some of these questions are aimed at, will we, what happens next, will there be a, another decision that comes before us? Or is it work that will just be between the applicant and the staff, does anything go to the city council, this decision will go to the city council, but what happens next?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through you, I think that's a kind of a perfect segue for, for the direction I was headed, is really, the, the discussion of you just and so forth, is, is really not pertinent to the preliminary plat, uh, plating of, of the one lot that we're trying to do tonight. Uh, so I wanna make that clear, that, I mean, that we are getting more information on what's gonna be happening there, what's, what's been approved, but really, what's pertinent is plating the lot, so that it's so that it's ready to go to the condo in the future. What that becomes, uh, to, uh, Commissioner Pacino's point, as to next steps, yes, it will go to council for preliminary plat, and then come back to our final plat, um, and then back to council for approval and recording of the, by plat. After that, yes, there could be discussions if the applicant does wish to do some other use, then that will be administrated unless there's a conditional use that's required on the use table. Uh, otherwise, if it's just primarily by law on site, then yeah, it would just be playing. But, just through conditional use, then it will come, it will come to this.
Okay. Sure, one, yes, that, huh?
I don't know, maybe through you or the applicant. Uh, we're not approving that these are fifteen units, I mean, he's gonna base this on sales. You know, if somebody wants to come in and take up enough space for three units, and we end up with nine, we're not gonna have a problem with that, all right? All right, it's, we're not approving the size of the units, we're not approving the interior layout of a building while we're doing this plat, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, through you, yeah, it would be a lot easier if there was nothing on the site, I think we would have been done already, there would, if it was an undeveloped site. But think of it as that, right, I mean, you're, we're, we're plating one lot. Um, we're not, you're, yes, you're not approving the use or the, the condos or building itself. Um, it's, and that's, that would be the same, for any subdivision that came before you, especially commercial, I mean, the, the lots are there, but what goes on there is anybody's guess, based on use table, the site plan that comes in, so. It's kind of unfortunate that i- i- there's something there, it's established, so it's, it's hard to wrap our head up, just, or, by it all, it's just the fact that this is one lot, and that's what we're doing tonight.
All right, thank you. And any other questions from the commissioner? Okay, so, so, thank you, Philip, and, and the applicant, appreciate it. Um, any, uh, public comment on this topic? Seeing none, final, um, comments, discussion amongst commissioners?
Oh, question?
And, um, yeah, I, I guess, you know, that, that, um, you know, the one, one, that, that, the memorandum of understanding and all the the Bill Nye stuff is, is pretty, pretty detailed, and assuming that's all all, all very good, according to the city, is sort of my, my stuff about the, so. Um, is there a motion on, sure?
Get up and ask your own. That is all legal. Move to recommend the city council approve the bittersweet industrial subdivision preliminary plat based on findings of fact and conclusion of law, that's subject to recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second from, uh, Jake. Um, further discussion? Seeing none? We'll call vote?
Pacino?
Aye.
Dixon?
Aye.
Madam Moore?
Aye.
Otul?
Aye.
Masilic?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That is seven yeses, zero no.
Uh, motion passes, uh, seven to nothing, um, but thank you for for making this project on the board. Next item of business is, uh, T A dash twenty-three dash oh eight amendments to title fifteen dot oh eight dot oh three oh dot E dot two dot C, downtown commercial district development sets. Yes, sir.
Chair, Commission, uh, tonight, we have before you some adjustments to the downtown commercial zoning district, and some of the standards um, that were required for the development within this district. If you all remember, all the way back to August fourteenth, I brought before you some, um, some changes to our uh, development standards related to dumpster enclosures. Um, this process that are, those tax amendments have been approved by city council. However, during that process, the city council raised some concerns regarding, um, the impacts that these um, standards would have on the a downtown commercial zoning district and the buildings that are there. As many of you know, uh, there are generally no trash enclosures in the downtown commercial zoning district, and the desire was to protect primarily, um, the lots that were not able to accommodate, um, a, a trash enclosure. For the most part, um, are in its entirety, the tax amendments that were approved by city council do not change triggers, um, for pre-existing non-conforming uses, um, or pre-existing non-conforming structures, which most of the downtown commercial district have some example of that. Um, however, um, through the approval process, the council did ask us to draft some exemptions, like that were specifically laid out in code. Um, the the amendment, um, is within your staff report, um, and isn't a blanket exemption for, um, the downtown commercial zoning district, um, it is an exemption meeting certain requirements. Um, and if I can lay those out, um, primarily, um, it will be used for, for properties that currently use the alley as storage um, for their dumpsters, which is a fair amount, if you think about the, um, core of downtown majority of them uses. Um, additionally, the building would need a zero lot line setback, to be able to fill up the entire lot. Um, additionally, the, um, the dumpsters would need to have a, um, to be constructed, and the lid would need to be constructed out of metal. Um, that would be somewhat of a change from what is currently down there. Um, primarily, what you see down there is metal dumpster enclosure, plastic lid, um, but for fire safety reasons, um, they're requesting that, that that be added. Um, and then finally, uh, well, also, the, the dumpster would be placed against a non-reflective siding material, such as um, base or radar metal, um, and then that it meets, um, all other requirements for the international fire code within, um, the section titled combustible waste materials. So, these are, these are the cha-changes that we would be requesting, um, and as is the usual, this will be before, after your recommendation for approval or denial, this will be for city council for review.
Okay, so, questions?
I, I got a question, Chair, um, so, just the language here, it says, um, you know, may be exempted if it meets these requirements, is there any instance where it would be not denied when it had all these requirements? And is there a specific reasoning of why it says it may be exempted instead of shall be exempted?
Uh, there was not a specific. Uh, there was not a specific reason to use that that language, it could easily be changed. Um, I'll probably add, I can't think of a specific example where this would be denied. Um, but it was mostly just creating a a scenario where it could without any easy change, um, that we can make with the presentations.
Sure.
Tom? I'd like to talk to waste management to see the availability of metal tops, steel tops on the dumpsters.
So yes, um, currently dumpsters that are in along the alley within downtown commercial district are not serviced by the city. They are serviced primarily by Republic. Um, and so I did reach out to Republic. Um, they can modify their dumpsters to come in conformance with this. It will come with other charges, monthly charges to the the, um, person who's taking the service.
Yes, I'm going to get up charged for the for the businesses and residents down there who use it. Right, I can spend twenty-two years as a downtown merchant. It's, I can say, it's a real problem and it's pretty expensive, so. Uh, but at least we made this change. I support this change.
Commissioner Motul? So, uh, through the Chair Joseph, uh, will the issue be resolved? Are there any folks, commercial folks outside the downtown commercial zoning district that have their dumpsters in and out? Do you know?
Um, commercial folk, commercial buildings, not, not that I can think of off the top of my head now. This would, this is primarily the issue. Issue, this is primarily the case within.
So you're pretty confident this is going to include everyone?
Yeah, um, this will include everybody within the downtown commercial zoning district. If anybody else has a outline, um, reason why they cannot accommodate that, uh, a trash enclosure, they can go through the normal variance process. That would come before you all, um, and then be approved by you all if they wanted to be exempt from the the section of code that was approved. So there is a way out of it.
Yeah, and she just, what is the mechanism that allows for them to be um, accepted? Do they get an official letter? I mean, is it a phone call and I mean, what what does the applicant get, I guess? In as as an acceptance that they're, you know, they're I guess, or is this just a blanket statement that just kind of allows this to happen? Or is there something that they get, they have to apply for it and they get it? You know, like what is the mechanism of somebody owns property, you know, held it's business exemption?
So this would be part of the site plan review process to to be exempt. Currently, anything that's standard, which is after we meet requirements of code, um, but, um, the concern was that we would require people to build a trash enclosure where a trash enclosure was not able to be said. Um, and so through that site plan process would be where we would review whether or not a trash enclosure could be be exempted or not. For example, range letter, we don't need it for a traction. Be obligated, and so they would be exempt from that section.
Sure. Just, um, quick comment. Um, so I, um, like the way this is structured and I understand their reasons, um, why you're trying to address it. Uh, my my preference is to, um, approve it as it's written with May. I think this question of should it be shall is an important policy one that's worth writing on the record for the council to consider. Um, but it it does have the significant effect of of creating an automatic right and and that may be what they.
Right, that's right.
Right, and so, um, but I I would be inclined to improve it, um, uh, affirmative that's been written. I I have one, um, question about the zero lot line setbacks. Um, uh, I don't know if you, maybe everybody falls within that, but it, but the way it's written, if it's like an inch, like zero lot line, it still might not fit, right? And so why why did you choose that zero lot line as opposed to having more flexibility in that standard?
Right, so zero lot line, if you look at most of the the buildings in the downtown, especially the ones that are currently using, um, the the alley, is there storage for for dumpsters is generally what what you see, um. I mean, I I guess if it was an inch, it seems somewhat punitive, uh, to to go after somebody and force them to 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 do either a variance processor, um, or make them build a new closure, but, um, yeah, I guess, zero lot line could could be very restrictive.
Is 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 that the what what may is there? You can say, well, you know, maybe if there if there are foot or two, or if there's some distance that you still cannot accommodate the the dumpster, that you get exempted, exempted with.
I don't think that would be the effect of it though, because it says above that that all of these requirements have to be met in order.
Right.
They might do it, so I I again, it's a policy decision and I would just flag that it that it might not be necessary to have that, uh, criteria in there. If the true desire is to make sure you're allowing for the downtown businesses to operate with their own dumpsters. And so I I would like to know if there's a strong reason why you think that is important to keep in there.
Well, and and the reason why it was put in there partially, that's your point, um, was that, um, there are businesses currently in downtown district that have space to accommodate the dumpster enclosure, and we would like to still see that there. Um, dumpster enclosures do a lot for sanitation, smell, safety, um, um, and so we want to make sure that um, lots that can still accommodate a trash enclosure will still be required to have a trash enclosure in the future. But the ones that are using the alley, what do you think of as like the core basis of of downtown? Of the outs.
Uh, so so if if you're going to do a site plan inspection and making sure that it conforms to these requirements, could you say something like really has zero lot line setbacks or or you set back too limited or restricted to to fulfill the purpose of the of the of the exemption?
Yeah.
You know, so so that, you know, if it's two feet, you still can't get your dumpster in. You know, it gives you guys, when you do the site inspection, say, yeah, you know, we're, you know, there's no, it's not zero, but you still can't put a dumpster in. I mean.
And that's certainly an amendment that could be made, if you would like to approve with amendments, that is, that is certainly.
Uh, the other, Mr. Chair. The other situation I see happening is I know a couple of businesses down there where there is room to put an enclosure, but they couldn't put an enclosure because the truck couldn't service. There is too narrow, too narrow an alley to be for the truck to be able to reach it. Now, Steel overcame that because they were able to bring a straight in truck and back it up, but modern printing didn't have enough room because, uh, the tire store next door wasn't enough room to build an enclosure in turn to serve. Was the situation or something like that? There's enough room to put in a dumpster, maybe even enclosure, but nobody can service. So the driver had to get out of the truck, wheel the thing over and then hook it up to the truck and load it.
And and I will say that's currently why our solid waste division does not service most of downtowns because our trucks aren't able to accommodate, um, the either width of the alley or able to get in. So that's why Republic has a different truck and a different method of picking it up, which is generally wheeling to the back, um, wasting it over has done that. Um, I think as stand, we would still prefer to see trash enclosures for safety aesthetics, smells, those sort of things of the downtown commercial area. Um, and, um, regardless of whether or we can service it or not. Um, current standards.
The other discussion with that, Commissioner Motul? So do we need to introduce some language that basically explains, uh, that uh, that specifies, uh, where serviceable, uh, enclosures can be constructed, they should be constructed. Otherwise, uh, uh, the property owners can use them for sort of to pay. Do we need that language in there or is that redundant?
Uh, I would believe that that would be slightly redundant. It's, um, this is an exemption, otherwise it would need to follow the the code as written in and approved, um, in the prior section that was talked about, that means.
Any other?
Yeah, I already got the book. Um, just the code, how often is there are things ambiguous and and up to the city manager's office? That things may be exempted, I mean, like on our site plan stuff, we have a a roadway, it's required to be twelve foot. It's not like it may be approved if it's twelve foot. It is, I mean, it's very clear and concise, and it gives a developer a very clear, um, you know, direction and clear understanding of what their code or their site plan requires. How often does it show up where things aren't that what?
Uh, I can't give you a specific number, but I'll say frequently for exemptions. Uh, generally, if there's some a way to get out of a variance or, um, a way to get out of a specific design standard, it usually is up to the city manager's office and that works throughout, um, the V C. Good.
Sure.
I I think just to that comment, just for some perspective, it's a lot of those exemptions are on like, I would consider them similar to allowing some flexibility in trash enclosure. It's like, you can find that like with just the landscaping sections, like areaable landscaping widths. There's a little bit of parking, the parking section, there's even some stuff in design standards for you have to put certain elements like on a building or on like a house. And it says like others may be approved by the city manager's office, which essentially it's us, but like. I mean, it's, but it's, I would consider it like fairly minor type things that allows, we just can't come up with all the scenarios, right? And I think that's kind of what's getting at, is for perspective.
Okay. No, but my my final comment is whether whether commissioners think that there's there's value in a in a text amendment to to sort of, uh, yield a zero lot line setback into the order of item B, building a zero lot lines setbacks or setbacks or are too restricted to accommodate dumpster?
I I think I think that could be, but that more, you know, just by more exercise and efficiency, like trash enclosure stuff.
I don't know what you said.
That works.
Okay, okay, so what propose a a text amendment to get there?
Um, yeah, I'll propose, is that the right order of business or what?
Start with your main motion to approve, and then you can write an amendment.
Okay, thanks.
So I, um, move to recommend that the city council approve amendments, the title fifteen point oh eight point oh three zero point E, point two, point C of the Labor Bay Municipal Code based on findings of fact laws recommended by staff.
Is there a second? Madam Moore, a second, um, the discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make amendment to that, um, item fifty oh eight oh three dot E, dot 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 two, one E, three is follows, the building has zero lot line setback on all sides to, or if space limitations are such that a trash enclosure is not feasible.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Amendment, Madam Moore, second, discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, uh, uh, voice vote that amendment, all those who gave the amendment say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay? Okay, uh, amendment, uh, exception, and so back to the the main motion, any further discussion of the motion with, uh, with the amendment? From the mission? Seeing none, will call vote on the main motion with the with the approved amendment?
Pacino?
Aye.
Dixon?
Aye.
Madam Moore?
Aye.
Motul?
Aye.
Prisicic?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Moody?
Aye.
That is seven yeses and zero no.
Your motion with amendment, uh, is is approved. Um, seeing that no long-range planning projects or variances, um, turn motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move second?
Second.
Okay, okay, although this is in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Okay, we are adjourned. Good. I think what, you know, what what tripped me up with.